All right. Okay, we can call this meeting to order. Select Board Meeting for August 28, 2019. Just give me one second to get this loaded here. I'll look at Molly's computer while mine's loading. So, we have our consent agenda. We have minutes to approve from May 8, 2019. Warrants AP 2006, AP 2005, AP 2007, AP 2006-S, WP 1954-2, WP 1955-2, WP 1956, WP 1957, PR 2004, and AP 2008. We have a bunch of one-day liquor licenses for UMass, top of the campus, football season games. We have one for September 7, one for September 21, 2019, one for September 28, 2019, one for October 26, 2019, one for November 2 of 2019, and one for November 23 of 2019. We have a veteran service inter-municipal agreement, City of Northampton and the Town of Hadley yearly agreement. We have a Hadley Police Department Lieutenant MOU, which we are going to hold on that. We have a Hadley Police Department Appointment, Jake Loughlin. We are going to hold on that too until the Police Chief arrives. We have a Chapter 90 state aid reimbursable for Rocky Hill Road, Mount Warner Road, South Maple Road, Aloha Way, and Lady Slipper Lane. We have a Sealer of Weights and Measures inter-municipal agreement with the City of Northampton and the Town of Hadley yearly agreement. We have a Municipal Hearing Officer, City of Northampton and the Town of Hadley yearly agreement. Then we have the Hopkins Academy Cross Country Request for the Reservoir Use. The cross-country team is hosting three races on September 10, October 1, and October 15 of 2019 at the Bay Road Reservoir. And finally, we have one-day liquor licenses again for top of the campus Mullen Center, the Chris Young Concert, course concessions, green room, and block party in parking lot. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the exception of the two police items and the one-day liquor license for the Chris Young Concert for further discussion.
Just for discussion, I think that there is a restriction that the Fire Chief wanted to put on one of these licenses.
That's why I just pulled that one out.
That's the Chrissy. Yeah, that's the last one. Okay. Second?
Well, did you get it straightened out, whatever restriction you wanted to put on it or not?
We're going to talk about that after.
Oh, okay.
So, I pulled that one out. Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, except for the DPW Chapter 90.
Okay. Do we want to discuss the top of the campus real quick? One-day liquor license and the Police Chief's restrictions that he wanted on that?
The Fire Chief?
Or Fire Chief, I'm sorry.
They actually both have conditions that they weren't on it, but Chief Mason, I've already explained to top of the campus, and they've already made the steps. They both had concerns about the block party. This is a new thing that the Mullen Center is trying, and the Police Chief requested that they reach out to the UMass PD and discuss it with them before they went any further with setting everything up. And the Fire Chief is asking for inspections to be required and that there be a fire watch with an executive officer for the event.
So like an EOC like we do for the games?
Yes.
And is...
...for by the event organizers, I assume?
Yes.
Did they discuss the block party? Is that a cordoned off area where they're doing the party? Or is it tailgating? Or is it?
They provided a map which should be attached, and if not, I can give you a copy.
Probably is. Oh, maps.
Can I pencil this right here?
No, that's the football game. It's the, I think it's the last batch of them.
Do you have, I don't have a map.
As I understand, I can pass this...
Sure.
Yeah, I don't think I have a map.
It's this section right here with the parking and the sidewalk needs.
Oh, so the parking right in the front.
So between practice rank and...
Can the Chief give us a little insight on this?
The top of the campus, Mullen Center.
Restrictions that yours want to do?
Chris Young Concert, it's the block party.
Oh, yeah. That was my, my recommendation is just to make sure that they talk to UMass PD about the fact that they're going to put up the snow fencing around it, how they're going to set the whole thing up. I've spoken with the UMass Police Chief in the past about things like this, and he's expressed concern only in their barricading type thing. Make sure that they're kind of, like with the 4th of July one, his concern was to make sure that they had a very similar setup, make sure that they had snow fencing up, and they were doing proper IDs, ID checks and all that.
Isn't there a staircase right there too?
I'm not...
When you're between the two buildings?
It's like three or four steps, I think, not a big one.
Oh, I thought there was a steeper one that went down to the ball fields.
Oh, in the back.
In the back?
Yes.
Yeah. I would just be a little bit worried about that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly about, you know, what the footing is, but like I said, his concern in the past had more to do with making sure that you keep underage people out and 21 and older in, and, you know, we lose it up to the company to deal with safety issues.
So, or do you want to do your men's club thing?
I would hope.
Yeah.
Very similar, yeah, but I, my guess is that would be a lot smaller.
Yeah.
The 4th of July one that they did, there was very similar concerns to this one, and it was very small, very small.
And this one, they're saying 300 to 450 people for the block party portion of it.
And the block party, you've got to pay to get in, I'm assuming, and then have your ID checked, and then that type of thing?
I think when they say 350 to 450, I think they mean for the total block party, not specifically for the alcohol portion of it.
Okay.
I don't think that's what they're anticipating for that part of it.
That's what they're anticipating for the block party part of it is 350 to 450, and the concert's 3,000 to 5,000.
I'm comfortable making a motion to approve subject to both Chiefs signing off on their restrictions. Try it, see how it goes.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's do the Police Department Lieutenant MOU, looking for a Select Board approval on that. I don't know if you guys wanted to say anything about that, or...
There are no changes except for that which were already approved by the Board. The only change was the non-union personnel increase that was voted on, I think, last fiscal year for this fiscal year. That's the only change to the contract. You simply need you to approve it annually because of the way that an MOU works. So that's all it is.
Okay.
Is that the plan to go forward just with an MOU rather than a contract, or is that just what we're doing for now?
Yeah, the Police Lieutenant would not be allowed to have a contract under statute, so we'd have to do the MOU.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have Hadley.
Yeah.
There we go.
Yeah, you're live.
We'll watch you. And then we've got a Hadley Police Department Appointment for Jake Loughlin, full-time appointment.
So as you know, recently, we had a vacancy come open with Officer Cabrera, sorry, Officer Cabrera leaving to go pursue state police aspirations. And Jake has worked for us since October 2018 as a Special Police Officer. He probably remembers his face. He previously worked in the capacity of a police cadet at UMass, and he's currently a military police officer for the United States Army. Jake is working towards an Associate Degree in Criminal Justice from Plato Community College and is balancing that workload with working all manner of shifts here at Hadley Police Department. He's been working nearly full-time hours to fill gaps in our schedule while we have three officers in the academy, and was the leading candidate for any vacancies in our full-time ranks. With one such position just becoming open with Officer Cabrera leaving, Jake was the obvious choice, and he accepted the conditional offer with great excitement. Jake has already qualified for a waiver from the MPTC, which as you know is a huge hurdle that we have to get over so we can get him working immediately. And he can begin working as soon as you decide on his appointment here tonight. With all those facts, I would recommend that Jake Loughlin be appointed as our newest full-time police officer for Hadley Police Department.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, most of them are soaking wet with the powder just on, so we're going to go...
I bet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a quiet rest of your evening.
Okay, we can open up the floor to public comment. I don't know if anybody is here for a public comment tonight. Jane, do you have any public comments you're going to make tonight?
Thank you. Sorry.
Oh, Amy.
I want to remind everybody that the Friends of the Hadley Council on Idging is holding a reception, thank you and farewell for Suzanne, our Director of Six Years. It is tomorrow between 1:30 and 3:30. It's a drop-in event. Will be light refreshments, and hopefully, everybody in town who's been impacted by her presence should come.
Thank you.
And where is this?
It will be at our current site at the Most Holy Redeemer Parish Hall.
Thank you. Amy, you have a comment?
My comment is, so you know that working at the bank, I get a lot of people coming through giving comments to me all the time. So, I had a comment that someone wanted a light between the back of Walmart and J.C. Penney, and I just thought I'd mention it, that they're very concerned about the crossing. And then the article in the newspaper didn't help, that people are crossing now with wheelchairs and walkers and whatever. That there's some problems crossing that road, and I know they put a middle lane in there, but I just said, okay, I'm coming to the meeting, I'll mention it.
Along with the last three nights of being in on TV on local news.
Really? It was on local news?
It was just on again tonight.
Oh, okay. Missed that one. All right.
Okay.
They took the bus stop out at Mountain Farms Mall, which we all knew.
Yep.
But now they have to either cross Route 9 by Jiffy Lou or they have to cross South Maple Street between Walmart and J.C. Penney. And there's no crosswalk on South Maple Street as of right now. And there's no way to get to the fight path to push the button to get across to either mall.
Is that something that we can encourage the DOT to talk to PBT?
Or talk to PBT or something? Yeah, so PBT has made this decision, so we've got to call into them.
Okay. But I mean, it seems like the DOT also had something to do with that design as well, right?
I think it was mostly PBT, and actually, South Maple Street passed Bay Point. I don't know exactly where is ours now. DOT is...
David Moskin said today that as the PBT rep for the town, I guess, or one of them, no one told him they were discontinuing service there either.
Yeah.
So it was less surprise to him.
From the paper, it was the Mountain Farms Mall, the, and the reconstruction of the roads in there, concerned about bus safety within the mall there, so I don't know. It seemed like there is an ongoing investor, discussion between Mountain Farms and PBT.
So you and I had a conversation about this. You were mentioning some internal construction. Do you have any further insight?
Yeah, nothing was mentioned about PBT being taken out of the site. I think there has to be discussions with several groups to try and get something back. That's going to stay out of the problem. And when LO Bean and Montengrill open up, it's going to be worse. Because the only bus stop's on a corner of J.C. Penney right now. Before, it was right by Walmart, I believe.
Right.
Crosswalk.
Yeah, and I believe from that DOT meeting we went to a couple months ago, they were talking at that point as well about putting in a better bus stop along Route 9 and eliminating the one from Mountain Farms Mall. So, I don't know if this is an extension or precursor to that road construction, but I remember that distinctly from the meeting, so.
Yeah, but that's a few years down the road, so I know...
Yeah.
What's going to happen in the meantime?
What we're going to do in the meantime, yeah.
Yeah.
If they could possibly get that stop back at Long Farms Mall.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
If I hear back from PBT, I'll let people know.
All right. We have presentations scheduled for 6:45. David Rotano, who was our intern for the summer, would like to give us a presentation on his summer work.
Before you begin, this is David's second internship with us. He was with us last year, student of Hopkins Academy, and you're a rising senior, aren't you?
I am, so definitely excited about that.
And last year, he worked a lot on the Service Delivery Plan Update, which is one of the documents that we presented to us to be affordable to help us get the AAA bond ratings, so some credit rebounds onto you for that as well.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And this has been another year of learning for me, definitely, and it continues to be because I made a specific PowerPoint presentation for this, but neglected to call in to get a projector set up. So I will be giving this presentation orally without assistance, so you know, you've just got to keep learning. So, in terms of what I did this year, this was another big year for the Service Delivery Plan, less so than the amount of edits that needed to be made last year. A lot of the work that I did last year did carry over to this year. This year was more updating rather than restructuring the Service Delivery Plan in essence. So basically, what that meant for us was new budgets, updated personnel things, updated organizational charts because of the reforms made to the Police Department and to the Treasurer's Office. So those have been properly reflected in the Service Delivery Plan. And beyond that, it's just updates to the cherry sheet and that kind of information at the end of the document. And that's really all that needed to be done. So, a pretty, pretty quick fix, nothing, nothing much to worry about there, and that's all ready to go for the next time you have to present it to MSFP or whoever you're looking to present it to. In terms of the other work that I did, I did a lot of work for the Planning Board this year. This was where, basically, what they had me doing was I, they gave me these big binders full of meeting minutes back from like 1978 and stuff, all the way up to 2019. So I spent a lot of time in the copy room. Those all got scanned through, so those are all digitized, ready to go, and it's good because having those things on hand on the computer is a lot easier than having to rifle through a million sheets of paper at a time trying to figure out the one specific meeting that you're looking for. So having it all online, having it in those folders allows it to be more organized and allows it to be generally more efficient and take up less space for the purposes of archiving and stuff like that. Beyond that, there was some work that I did in terms of assisting with the development of a commercial development protocol. And so basically, what that was, was seeing that there was a little bit of improvements that could be made to interdepartmental communication when it came to building projects regarding commercial development. David and some other people came up with the idea to come up with a set protocol to basically just figure out what each department's responsibilities would be and what everyone would do in order to communicate each other during a commercial development process. And this allows for greater interdepartmental communication, allowing for greater efficiency, and allowing such processes to be expedited far more than they were before. So makes the people who are trying to build here happy, makes us happy because we don't have to worry about doing a million things at a time, and just generally makes things easier for us. Beyond that, there was work that I did for the Building Inspector as well, where much like last year, came through, shuffled around all their files, did a bunch of general tidiness stuff with that. So got everything put away, closed out some old permits that needed to be closed out on the, on the computer program that they gave me. So those are all filed and nicely stored away. And I also helped to create an organizational, basically, an organizational chart format for the, all the plans up above the filing cabinet. So you've got all those little blueprints and sheets of like, basically, little project plans all rolled up and curled up in these nice little rolls. And essentially, what I did was look through all of the, all of the cubbyholes filled with those things and figured out which individual projects were in each one so that I could create an organizational chart to show people and allow for greater, easier navigation of the entire, of the entire room. So basically, you can find what you're looking for faster, is that. And beyond that, there was, I also worked on the administrative and finance policies, doing some updates to those. I sent out a bunch of things to all the different departments who are hopefully making edits now to their sections of the, of the administrative and finance policies. I know David got me back his and those edits have been reflected in the, in the final documents, so this...
Well done, David. Well done.
And basically, this is just another quality of life document, allows us to take a look at what needs to be done in any given circumstance, such as, for instance, fraud was a pretty big one in there, and also, of course, procurement.
Anti-fraud.
And, yes, anti-fraud. Anti-fraud specifically. Starting at base in front of the camera. But, but yes, basically, that's, that was pretty much the extent of my, of my experience here. I did actually work with the Treasurer as well, shouldn't forget them, working on payroll distribution as well, so basically stuffing envelopes, getting them all printed out, and getting people their money. And that's pretty much that, among other little, little smaller jobs. So I, once again, would like to thank the Select Board for having me. I'd like to thank you for, once again, for the amazing experience that I had this year and last year, and I would like you to thank, and I would like to thank you for sending some money my way this time. I was very generous of you all. I'm very grateful for everything that you guys have done for me, and I hope that my work is something that you've looked to and been, and been happy with as well. So that's pretty much that. Thank you very much.
Well, the school's not that far away. You don't have to stop, you know?
So David also helped me with the MassWorks grant application, and we were working together on getting that done, and we beat the deadline by 45 minutes. It's a $200,000 ask from the state, so thank you for your help with that.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Are you still considering a future career in public administration?
Well, we're definitely going to have to think about that one. It's, you know, it's, you know, on the list of options, certainly. It's always, it's always an idea.
Yeah, you should seriously think about it. You did extremely well.
Thank you.
Yeah, and moving forward, you're applying to colleges. If you need any recommendations from the Board or anything along that line, please feel free to hit us up. I'd be happy to...
I absolutely will.
Put something together. You've done a fabulous job, yeah.
All right. Thank you, David.
Thank you very much, David.
Thank you, David.
Okay. We just have a few minutes before our 7 o'clock CPA appointment.
Want to do the schedule?
Yeah, let's do the schedule. Here we go. So we have some upcoming dates for, thank you very much, for Select Board Meetings this coming fall and winter. We have September 4. I probably need to look at my calendar as I'm doing this as well, just to make sure. September 4, September 28. It should be September 25, I believe.
25.
25.
Yep.
October 2. Actually, that one I do have a conflict for right now. I don't know.
And we have...
And we have something else.
Every single...
Yeah, and that's...
One, two, three, four...
The 9th.
Six in a row.
Do you want to skip that one and do the 9th? Or is that, what, how critical is the 2nd? Or can we do it a different?
You're going to be posting on the, the 9th is the last date of post, so you're going to be working on the warrant. So if you can devote a lot of time to September 28 to working on the warrant, you can skip the 2nd, but definitely have to hold the 9th.
Okay.
Everybody okay with it?
Yeah, I mean, we can have it. Something comes up, we may just want to start the 25th at 6 or something instead, so we can fit it in and not be...
The 28th, yep.
25th at 6? Okay.
Good idea.
And then, so scratch the 2nd.
And then October 9. Looks good. 17th, that is the public forum for special town meeting. Then we have the 24th is special town meeting. Do we want to have anything the 23rd? A quick meeting to review anything before town meeting, or we think we're good? That is a lot.
Usually, you have a meeting before town meeting.
Before town meeting, yeah. Okay, that's fine.
Like an hour before or something?
Yeah.
So the night of 25.
It'll be 6 o'clock on...
On the 24th?
24.
24th, October 24.
But not on the 23rd? Is that what we're saying? And we can always schedule if we have to, maybe caution people against doing anything?
Then we have November 6.
Looks good.
November 13, all boards meeting. November 20. December 4. And then before Christmas, December 18. Does all look...
For the all boards meeting, we should have a discussion about what the agenda's going to be?
Yeah.
Because as soon as we tell anybody that we want an all boards meeting, they want to know why.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think last year, we did the Planning Board, did a presentation, right?
Yep. If I ask many good with these dates?
With, which one with the all boards?
That would be November 9th, 13th.
9th and 13th? I'll send out, I would say so, but I'd have to send out that.
Yeah, so November 6 would be the tax classification hearing.
Yes.
And on November 13 would be the all boards meeting.
Pause for a minute. Now, we could, we can launch into the CPA Committee. Here we go. To discuss the future of CPA in Hadley, several, we have pondered, having several articles at Fall Town Meeting, to look at the CPA percentage that gets contributed to the CPA fund. Right now, it is a 3% contribution that we give to CPA. We have looked into possibly reducing that percentage to 2% instead of 3% in order to dedicate more funds to bolstering the sewer enterprise fund. It did come to my attention today that if we were to pursue anything like that, change in CPA funding, we would have to have a town meeting vote, and then we would have to have a ballot vote that would be held at a regular town or state... a ballot vote that would be held at a regular town or state election. So if we did do any changes like this, we couldn't, and it got approved at town meeting, we couldn't actually have a vote on changing that CPA percentage until, I think it's March 2nd, Super Tuesday of 2020. So it would be, you know, a bit out before we were actually able to make any changes. And I don't know how that would all affect, but we wanted to basically have you guys, you all here tonight to, you know, speak your side of the story about the importance of that 3%, where you think you feel, what you think kind of CPA projects we're looking at in the future and how we're gonna use that money. Cause I think some, some members of the board were feeling like, oh, there's a lot of money in CPA fund. Do we need to contribute more there if we don't have anything specific we're working on? And so wanted to have you in to discuss, discuss that issue.
And also I think when we met last, we didn't have complete information about the actual dollars that we're talking. And it sounds like the state has made some changes that would be important to this discussion as well relative to the match percentage.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is actually going up.
And that's, that's one thing I wanted to bring up. I was brought aware of this as well, that CPA funding, if you are in that 3% category, you can get pretty, there's several rounds of CPA funding. So there's a first round where you get X amount of dollars, but then if you're at that 3%, you can go two and even three rounds of additional funding to contribute towards CPA. So, I mean, there are a lot of benefits to getting that, you know, quote unquote free money to, to keeping that CPA percentage at 3% if we have projects we're looking at doing with that money. So I don't know if you guys have anything to contribute or your thoughts if this was presented at town meeting, what you'd stand up and say and, you know, to, to kind of look at CPA.
Okay, well, thanks for inviting us. I'm Andy Morris-Friedman. I'm the current chair of the Hadley Community Preservation Act Committee. I wanna thank the other committee members for being here to help support me and the CPA. And to thank my wife, Michelle, who's covering my martial arts class today.
Sorry about that.
How long do we have?
As long as you'd like.
How long do you, how long do you want? 10, 15 minutes?
15 minutes?
Yeah.
Great, okay. That lets me know how far back, you know, to go in the past. Okay, so Hadley adopted the CPA in 2004, was a unanimous vote in town meeting. There have been 72 approved projects. Only two projects were rejected by town meeting. That's a pretty good percentage. 28% of them have been to preserve open space, five for housing, we could talk about that, 32 historic and seven for recreation. The total amount given to the, to Hadley by the state, I just approximated it, the state match is $1.94 million since 2004. Hadley's contributed 2.9 million for a total of $4.82 million since 2004. The match has gone down. Every good thing seems to not be as good as it once was that way, but it's still averaged 75.8% a year. This year's match was 41%. What Christian said was right. There's three CPA rounds. There's the round that everybody gets, there's the round that small towns get, there's the round that towns and cities at 3% get. And that's really the good ones, like being seeded into the playoffs if I could use those sorts of. That's why we got 43%. In fact, Hadley is fifth in terms of recipients in terms of full dollars per capita.
You mean the whole state?
The state, yeah. Cause we hit all three sweet spots. Let's see. Also from the CPA commission, oh, the treasurer says we have $1.66 million currently in the CPA fund. So we definitely have been-
Available.
Available.
Cause there's another- Cause it's 500 earmarked for something?
Right. And we have some really interesting projects, you know, on the books right now. You know, at CPA, we get criticized for using the money and for not using the money. That's just the way it goes, I guess. I don't have to tell you guys that. But we feel really seriously about our responsibilities. It's the people's money and we're not just giving it away. It's collected for specific uses and it's also prohibited for specific uses. And sometimes it's hard to tell from the regulations which is prohibited and which is allowed. And that's where the difficulty is coming. We use the CPA coalition in Boston and we have some pretty good discussions within our committee to make sure that people's money is used wisely. I think the fact that only two proposals have been denied shows that we're doing a pretty good job of that. All right, so the hard numbers are hard to calculate in the future because the state match changes, the amount of money available to the towns changes because it's registry fees that funds the CPA fund. I don't know why they did it that way, but that's really, and so if, if there's a lot of deep registry action, we all get more money. Also, some towns join, right? When Boston came in, the whole pot of money just shrank like the oral C and Russia, people were talking about. And then also property values in Hadley go up, so there's more money because it's a 3% surcharge based on your property taxes minus the first thousand, $100,000 of that. For, for senior citizens and other hardship cases, they can apply for an exemption. Okay, so, last, well, let's, yeah, last year at 3%, in the state match round one, we got $50,000, a little more. We got a little more than $40,000 in round two and $24,000, a little more in round three for a total of $381,941. No, it's, uh, $14. Thank you, Ed. Code share. That was a 43.5% match. So if we had been at 2%, we would have only gotten $33,737 in round one, nothing in round two, nothing in round three. For a total amount including the Hadley amount would be $211,164, only 19%.
So what was the amount last year with the Hadley amount plus the matching funds? The total?
Yeah, I'll show, I'll, I'll show you this.
Yeah, you got copies of it?
I have one copy.
I have any copies?
Yeah. Okay.
I can.
So the, so the total difference, the reduction in Hadley and the reduction in state money means we lose $170,750. It's really $80,750 because you're taking the 90 from the area. That's to this year. That's with a state match of 43%. Next year, the match is supposed to be 80%. So you have to roughly double that, so that would be like $160,000 we'd be giving out for next year, more or less. And then the governor has made it a priority to bring the 100% match back. Who knows? Whatever you have to go with. So that's-
Anybody else?
Andy, can I just ask a question on that? Are there any proposed changes in the CPA guidelines that are coming along with these percentage changes? Or is it just the existing program as is and purely funding that's changing?
The percentage is based on the amount of revenues brought in from the, you know, the licensing, the transfer fees, whatever it is they're called.
She wants to know whether they're changing what the money can be spent on.
They, I don't think there's any, I don't think there's anything in words.
Like substantial?
They recently just changed it to include, you know, recreation in addition to open space. It's like the three categories, housing, history and open space, recreation.
Okay.
So CPA is kinda like a 401K, all right? You put in a certain amount, you being the town, and the state is like the employer. It puts in a certain amount. And that way it grows, the money grows even faster. It might be good to, instead of funding your 401K, buy a new car, you know, or put a wing on the house or whatever, but then you lose your employer's match and you're really hurting yourself in the long run. The other thing I wanted to say before I opened it up to other committee members is if you can't put a time limit on the reduction, you have to have another town meeting vote and another townwide vote.
Yes.
And there's a-
Change it back to 3%?
Yeah, so it's not, it's just not that much.
You wanna ask, Linda also has a piece of this?
Anything else?
Linda, did you have any comments on this?
That's, yeah, yeah, Andy's right on the explanations of the percentage and I think he, that's right. If I could explain the chart, it might look a little different than what you're saying because, because our actual percentage they calculated is 31 and you get the 40 because, because of the additional surplus that we, we get in. This chart shows that we were at 31.5% for our last distribution. We actually received $115,775. Our, our round one distribution would have been just $83,000, but because we have 3% in and not at 2% or 1%, we got that almost $32,000 extra in those last two rounds. This chart's interesting because it takes, is this the one that you had, Andy?
I have a simple one.
Okay. This is interesting because this is the article of, this was from the article about the increase this coming year and Hadley's increase would go from 31.5% to 76%. That would mean our basic round would have been 202,000 instead of 83. And then our surplus on top of that, I don't know. Let's just say it was the same, we'd be losing another 30,000. So when you talk about shifting 90,000 and gaining 90,000 by sparing the taxpayers that 90,000 in order to have it come from another source, we're not just, so we're then losing not just that 90,000, which is a third, but we're losing a third of this, what would have been 83 or 202, that's almost 60 something, 65,000 plus dollars more that we would lose and we not, would not get those later rounds. And I, oh, then the other piece on that is that we do have the money in the account and it's right that we have 1.6 million available, but we've actually been carrying 2.1 million in the account because they have about a million dollars worth of expenses, approved items that are coming out as lower basis. We had over $60,000 investment income on that account. Like, the CPA funds again can be invested more aggressively than our general funds and so it's a good place for us to be burning, earning the extra money. So it really has been bringing us, even in the years that people are frustrated they haven't spent as much, we're gaining in other ways. We still get that state distribution, we still get the money in there and we still get the investment income. And they actually, the last couple of years, you spent half million at the annual town meetings and I think the year before it was another, between the two meetings, another $500,000. So they do spend, I know things are rejected and people get disappointed about various things that don't go through quickly and easily, but bottom line is they're spending half million a year and that's, that's pretty much keeping us even the last couple of years like, because that's very close to what we've been taking in. So it's a great investment for the town and I would, I would like to see it stay.
Let me just clarify, we aren't spending it.
Yeah.
Town meeting is authorized by-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely right.
Hadley's isn't spending it, right?
Yeah.
And, you know, one of the reasons we got this triple A rating is because the auditor said you guys have $4 million in the bank, the app of which was CPA. So it does benefit us though. Anyone else in the committee have anything they wanna?
Well, I, I wanted to say that as CPA committee member and as the finance chair, I would be very much against changing this percentage. Yes, I can see the frustration sometimes when maybe it's, it's more of the communication, not thinking it's being spent, but it is being spent and being a member on this committee, I do see it being spent. Like for the fields over at the school and, you know, all this, all this property that is now preserved, you know, how many acres do we have preserved?
Over 4,000.
4,000 acres, I mean, so, but just the numbers alone as far as finance committee, you know, when I look at those numbers, I just think, I, I, I don't think it's a smart move whatsoever to take a small, to, to lower that percentage because we're gonna be losing so much in numbers based off of, we're gonna be losing from the state, based off of what we're gonna be losing from investments, based off of our future, that we won't be able to fund some of these projects that we need to fund. We got things like big projects that we wanna fund, and, and the biggest project right now, it happens to be the school, but what happens when we, everyone decides what we wanna do with Russell School? You know, we may need that money because it's a historic. We wanna look at Golden Court and we wanna help them. So there's some big projects we're looking at and, you know, sometimes we just see some small ones and it's, I think it's more of the communication to get out to the, to the taxpayers, cause there's only a small amount of people that actually see what's actually happening that go to the town meeting. We're talking between 100, 200 people versus the town of 5,000. I think, and it's only the people that go to this town meeting, the same people all the time that actually know what's happening. Sometimes other, maybe we should look at putting some signs up, but I mean, people don't know what we're spending it on. And it's what we are spending it.
Yeah, and I'll just say, I appreciate, you know, when we, when this discussion came up, like a lot of things, things kind of come up and they get talked about and we don't always have all of the information in front of us. So I appreciate having the full scope of this for consideration as opposed to just kinda one piece of it, oh, you know, the difference between 3% and 2% is X, you do the calculation quickly, but it's far more-
It's a lot more than 1%.
Involved than that, yeah. And I think that, and it certainly the fact that the percentage change is going up that significantly is also a key consideration because now we're talking about a lot more money that we'd be looking at the opportunity cost of that, so.
Absolutely.
So thank you for coming and explaining all this.
Quite honestly, in plain English, to get our $93,000 that we were looking at, to lose $202,000 every year for the next X amount of years, it just doesn't add up.
Yeah, no.
Financially, good business practices tell me absolutely not.
Good. Thank you. Talking about using the 1% to pay, put towards the sewer, the taxpayers are still gonna pay the same amount of money.
Right.
Yeah.
So they're going to get a bigger bang for their buck, their 1% if the money stays in the CPA than if they, if it gets put into the sewer fund. The other thing that bothers me about that is now you're gonna make everybody in town responsible for paying for the sewer and what percentage of people in town actually use the sewer? Was it, I, I really don't have any ideas. Is it 80%, 90% or 10%?
900 sewer customers.
Out of 5,000?
Well-
900 households.
900 households out of 2,100. Uh, 2,100, I think. So it's about 40.
And the main, all Route 9 is on sewer, so a lot of the big businesses that, you know-
And I'm sure you've been watching the conversations. The conversation is the business portion of Route 9, the industrial section that they have implemented way back before all of us has been paying a substantial amount of taxes to offset the residential rates. So at this point, our discussion at the table here all the time has been take, to put everything back through taxation and just be one big happy family again instead of charging this guy this much, this guy this much. It's, it's a number shuffle right now at this point, cause we, we have no money in some of these accounts. And since treasurer has been going through and with the payrolls and all these departments, with all the health, uh, health payments in all, all these departments, you know, and they've all been growing, the retirement accounts have been growing, the OPEB's been growing and they haven't been substantially modified to X amount of employees in this department costs this much money to run this department. We, we, this is where- We, this is where we're at. It's all going to come, you just said it, it's all going to come out of somewhere. So if we went back through, and I said it a few times, take capital improvements, as we do with the water quite a few times, instead of a lot of water fees, and take them out of capital projects through taxation, it would alleviate some of the stress we have on the operating budgets in the water and the sewer. And some of us still have a hard time understanding that.
Just to refocus back to CPA for a second.
Yeah, yeah, we're not gonna.
I think we all understand the impulse to not raise taxes. And as taxpayers, I think we all appreciate it. So sometimes you have to cut something to pay for something else. But CPA is not the thing to cut because it's really a cut and 40% more.
Yeah, I mean, just from this, you know, if we contributed 80,000, almost 90,000 less in CPA, we'd be losing $80,000 in additional funding. So we're doubling our money in a year, essentially. I mean, how can you beat that? Anybody would take that investment if they could get it.
If you wouldn't put that money in a bank account, what would you get for interest? Technically, we're getting 43% interest.
Yeah.
That's, in this age, that's great.
Yeah, yeah.
And I didn't mean to usurp anybody's position or anything, but my name's Edwin Matousk, I'm a former chair of the CPA committee. I've never been on a committee in this town that we've had such lively discussions. We don't just say, "Oh, yeah, here, you can do yours, you can do yours, you can do yours, you can do yours." We used to, now people present a proposal. We take them home, we study them, we look at them, we peruse them. We meet again in two weeks, a voluntary board, no less. We're doing this because we like this town. That's why we're doing this. And then we come back and with a whole list of questions. What does this mean? What does that mean? What does this mean? I'm beginning, we started putting a time limit on the projects because there are, Andy has found out that there are projects that are still, got money in their coffers, that they haven't spent. But we have to go through the steps to retrieve it. We can't just say, "Well, you didn't spend it, so now we're taking it back." No, we put a time limit on the projects now. So now we can't. If you don't spend it after two years, you lose it. Makes sense. And the reason why sometimes it looks like we don't spend the money is we don't get requests for it. It's as simple as that. And anything to do with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has a bundle of strings attached to it. So we can't, as a committee, we can't say, "Oh, yeah, we can spend this, we can spend that." No, we can't. We vet every single project with Boston. And I know Andy has been in close contact with Stuart Saginaw, the chairman of the CPA Coalition in Boston. And they go back and forth. How can you change this to make it work? How can you change that to make it work? So this is, it's not, it's still going to cost me, it's still going to cost you, and it's still going to cost you the same amount of money. It's just, where does it go? Does it go underground and you flush the toilet? Or does it go when you drive by and you see land, or you see a preserved building, or you see fences around cemeteries? That's what this money is going for. And I guess you get the idea that this is not a really good idea to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Edwin. Does anybody else have anything additional to add other than what we've already kind of gone over?
David Monster here.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, someone else?
Was there someone else?
No, I was gonna, I was gonna ask a question, but maybe you're gonna ask the same one.
I was gonna ask if this select board would consider withdrawing the warrant article.
That was gonna be my question. Make a motion to pull the placeholder on the warrant for the CPA item only.
Second?
Okay, any further discussion?
Let me just say, I'm happy to come before the select board or any other town board, anytime, to explain the details and intricacies of the CPA process.
Well, after you approve it, the state still has to approve it, is what it comes down to, technically.
Well, no, there's no CPA police, okay? And a lot of towns take a lot of liberties, and there's a lot of controversy. So in Hadley, we've tried to, you know, Joe Fitzgibbons was the first chair. He said, "We're going to do stuff by the book." And, you know, we've tried to add a couple of chapters to the book since he left. But we still try to do things by the book because it keeps us out of trouble, and frankly, it keeps us out of town politics. You know, each project is valued on its own. And that's the main strength of the CPA committee.
Can I make a request of the committee as a whole that when the next tax bills go out, if you could put together maybe a one-page insert to basically inform the public that doesn't go to town meeting, maybe some past projects, what CPA funds are typically used for, so that way.
Like your CPA dollars at work.
Right.
You see that around other communities.
Maybe things that are underway, things that have been done in the past because, like she said, 100, 200 people see it in town meeting, and the other 4,000, 800 don't.
Right, that's a good idea.
Happy to do it.
That's a good idea.
All right, Jane?
I would like to thank you for the work you do.
I think he does a wonderful job, too.
All right.
You'll get your money after.
We have a, we have a motion here, so all those in favor?
Bye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Jane just wanted to thank him. I'd like to thank the whole board for all the time.
And everyone on the CPA committee is also on another town committee, except for me. So double duty for the CPA.
Thank you.
But you interview people at town meetings, so they must count for something early.
Happy meeting. Well, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for willing to speak with us, so I appreciate it.
Thanks for all the information.
Andy, just while I have you here, do you have any updates you want to share with everybody about Valley Bike, that meeting? I haven't gotten a chance to talk to you.
Oh, yeah, I'm back on, back in the saddle.
Yeah.
As Hadley's bicycle, whatever.
Advocate.
And I went to the big meeting in Northampton.
Yeah.
And it's, it's really interesting. The program is very interesting. It's expanding and it's collapsing. And it's got incredible potential and unbelievable problems. And I don't know how they're going to solve them, but they're going full speed ahead. And it was very interesting. And maybe Hadley will be a part of it, and maybe it won't. But I'm willing to keep people posted and, you know, if you want part.
Okay, yeah, we'll have to be in touch about it, see what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think they said 200,000 miles in the first year, the bicycles will be. That's a lot.
That's a lot of miles.
Yeah, a lot of miles.
Very interesting discussion about the distribution of bikes. Springfield and Holyoke are not getting the number of bikes that they're supposed to. Everyone thinks it's racism. Maybe it is. You know, Amherst gets the number of bikes it's supposed to, Northampton does.
When you say gets them, gets them from where?
Well, there's a certain number of bikes available.
Right.
Right? But they're supposed, the number of bikes available is supposed to be much higher. But they're having a lot of problems keeping the bikes on the road. So if there were fewer bikes available than they were supposed to do, who gets fewer?
Oh, okay.
Holyoke and Springfield.
Interesting.
Interesting, yeah.
So, but anyway, yes.
How many bikes does really have right now?
I don't remember.
But 200,000 miles, that's.
That's a lot of mileage.
They got one bike.
It's like light speed.
By the two bike racks in South Hadley, there's usually five or six of each one.
All right, our next thing is on the agenda here is succession planning. You know, there's a number of town officers, officials that have announced their plans for retirement. And one of those was the building inspector, and we'd just like to talk about how we can ease that transition. You know, we're seeing right now with the council on aging director transitioning that position and just with other positions around town, how can we make those transitions smooth? There's a lot of institutional knowledge that, especially in the building department, all the plans in the office, that successor will need to understand, among other things, so.
At least they're labeled and.
Yeah, I mean, David was here. Yeah, I don't know, Tim, if you have anything to add to kind of.
And that's why I wanted to bring it up now because I want to give you the time to think about it, see. I mean, it's going to be critical. My date right now is going to be April 16th, 2020. It gives us plenty of time to figure out what to do. And I'm very concerned about the future. And the reason is, is there's not a lot of building commissioners in the state. And they have stated that next year, with so many at my age that have retirement, they're going to be short 200 building commissioners.
200?
200.
Wow, okay.
And what is happening right now is everybody's jumping ship from one town to the other based on salary. And we're seeing it here, too, in the western part right now. A lot of guys are jumping from one town to the other because the towns are in need, and they, the only way to cover that is to raise the salaries. And I think, unfortunately, I'll be truthful, I think that's going to happen here, too. But I want, I want a good transition. I started this job 31 years ago, and it was supposed to be for only six months. I promised the town, here in 31 years. It's been great. It's been fantastic. Certainly when I started, I made the papers from Boston all the way down to Florida with regard to how the town was able to set me and my family to do this job. And it certainly did hit on papers. And it hit the town meeting floor several times in regards to issues with kids and everything. But it all worked out greatly, and the next chapter's going to start next year.
Bless you.
I've talked to a few of you in regards to who I felt would be good to review resumes. We certainly have to go out and advertise. I've made it abundantly clear, I think, that we really should have both of the chiefs involved in this. I interact with them almost daily. And I really feel that both chiefs should be part of the process of figuring out who's going to be our next building commissioner. I would also like to recommend David Tudor. And the reason is because of his vast knowledge in architecture. I think he would be valuable to review that. But that is certainly up to, it's your purview on who we would have. And hopefully, he would allow me to be part of that. And certainly, I'm looking at April 16th, but I am, you know, I'm part of this town, and I'm always going to be part of this town. If there's a need, I'm going to be here for it, for the town. I can be the alternate for some time, whatever you guys want to work out. The, but, I mean, the first critical issue is, I think there's got to be a review of the salary for the next person. And that review should be looking at other towns and what they're paying right now. And they're, right now, they're all across the board, and they're going up quickly because there's a number of towns right now that are short in Western Mass, and people are jumping back and forth.
A lot of small towns go to regional. A lot of small towns, up in hill towns, go regional still?
The COG has been very successful. They have a group of inspectors that do the towns. And that is something, I mean, we will never be able to join the COG because for the amount of work that we have, it would be horrendously expensive. But there are other ways that we can look at this position. With the number of building commissioners in need, it might be a possibility for the town to start looking at a building commissioner that would work for more than one town. We have several small towns here that have had serious problems keeping inspectors. It could very well be that maybe you could share one with majority of the time here. But that would mean is that a local inspector would have to be hired. And that might not be a bad way of looking at the future because there's a lot of things that I do that is very repetitive with the inspections, especially the yearly inspections. And we have quite a number, though. So we can start looking at different ways of setting the position up. And I know that Orange and a couple few other towns have done that very successfully. When their building commissioner left a number of years ago, Brian Galy actually went to Hawaii. And they actually set up a way of actually having him work out of Hawaii in several towns, with him coming back and forth. He has family here, he always comes back. But we could look at that. I'm very concerned, this town, with the diversity of commercial work, you're not just going to be able to hire anybody to do a good job. And, you know, that is, that is something that will affect all of we, get somebody that's not at a good par for what we need because it will affect our insurance ratings over time.
Tim, could I just ask if we wanted to share inspection services with another town? And, so I mean, the heavy lifting, I'm assuming, is the commercial side of things, right? I mean, that's where, right? You're not going to bring a, somebody, you know, what behind the ears in for that one? But could you theoretically, like on the residential side, share that relatively easily for home inspection type stuff with other area towns?
Yes. And on the.
Because that's more cookie cutter, right? Yeah. And the annuals.
That would be good for a local inspector.
I just heard at the beginning of the meeting, we got veteran services, we got SEALs and veterans, we got municipal hearing officer that we're sharing with Northampton. And I'm always looking into what it costs us for the department and what it would cost us to merge or regionalize us to one else. I've always brought it up for just about everything. So I don't know if it's something really worth taking a look at or not.
I would say the only concern I would have would say in Northampton, Amherst merged would be the customer service.
We've tried that before.
But, you know, maybe with Sunderland or some other smaller town that's more like Hadley.
Sunderland or Deerfield.
Deerfield town.
Yep, something.
Could be.
I saw Hadley, they've got their own.
They've all had problems trying to keep inspectors.
Do, does this call for any kind of subcommittee to look into our options a little bit more detail? I don't, I don't want to suggest any more subcommittees, but.
I want to nominate Joyce.
Yeah, yeah, Joyce has offered to head up this. No, but I don't, it seems like there's a lot of options out there we could possibly do. How do we narrow it down to something we want to execute? You know, I think, in a way, it's easy to just say, let's, let's get a, you fall out, somebody else falls in, you know, that's easy. But all these other options are a lot more complicated when it's unsure footing.
It's got to go through a higher position.
Yeah.
Administrators have to start talking.
The HR, the HR person we don't have yet.
But could you lay out, Tim, and I think this is something we asked of the planning board, to say, just, you know, we're not building inspector experts. We don't know what all the models. we're not building inspector experts, we don't know what all the models are out there. So you're just rattling them off. And I'm thinking about different things, but maybe you could even lay out, you know, this is the man hours needed full time in Hadley? And then kind of break, break out what could be shared? You know, kind of just the different variations of that?
Basically, that's what I said. You can get a full time local inspector. That takes, takes a lot. They can do a lot of the mundane stuff, the repetitive stuff, the annual inspections and a lot of the smaller inspections of the residential.
But they would be shared with other communities?
Not the local.
Oh, not the local? It would be the commissioner level that would be shared?
The commissioner can be shared.
Okay, that's what I was missing.
Yes. So you could share the commissioner. I mean, yeah, you could flip it either way. I can tell you right now, I mean, there is, there's much more work than I could possibly do. I have been very, very I think I've, it's been, I've been very lucky that nothing's really blown up in my face on a lot of this. And the reason is, is this is a very small group of contractors that work on residential here. Why is that? Because a lot of our stuff is very high end. And you, and there's a lot of contractors here that are very well known. I, I can trust them. I can't get out to all and do all the inspections. I can't. I just physically, there's not enough time. But I've set up a system where I can work with them. They can send me photos. They can email me stuff and they do that all the time. And I said, okay, you're all good to go. Is it the best system? No. Should I be doing that all the time? Not really, but I don't have enough time to do it. We have to really look at making sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing as a town. Because some other towns have gotten into a lot of trouble over this. And we don't want to be there. Again, I've been very lucky because we've worked with the same contractors from residential. And I, I know them well and I know which ones I can trust. And they're very, very good at calling me and saying, Tim, this is where I'm at. I'm sending you these pictures. And I might even notice something in those photos. And I said, give me another photo of this. I know that they're good. They're really good contractors, I can do that. That's not always going to be the case.
So along the lines of what you were talking about, can you give us a menu of different options?
Yes.
And, you know, pros and cons, maybe? And maybe some of them will even be not so good ideas, but at least something we can review to decide which direction we want to go. And then, you know, we can put out a hiring announcement sometime. We're probably looking at, what, January at least in order to get it done by April timeframe?
If not, before the turn of the year, yeah. I mean, it does take a little while to get it out there and have enough time.
It could be December anyway, first of December, get it out for a couple of months.
Because we're going to want some overlap.
And David, did you have any comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, so in terms of any kind of potential budget impact at Tim's retirement, congratulations in advance for you for that.
Well done, well done.
We have two bites of the apple. We can either try to put something together for October 24th or we can do it at the May 7th, 2020 annual town meeting, which is probably a better way to approach it.
You mean for the overlapping positions or for additional salary?
Additional salary or anything, any kind of budget adjustment that we need to make. We can put it at FY 20 article on the warrant for FY 2021. Because it occurs within the fiscal year. So we've got two bites of the apple.
Maybe a, at least an overlap budget, maybe for this town meeting if we can do it? And then
Because if he's looking at
Well, I was just wondering, what if, we have a few things, you know, floating around and we have that line item in the budget under the select board. I think it's, it's kind of like an emergency item. It's in the $20,000 to $30,000 range, I want to say, right now. We could up that a little bit and that could kind of be used to cover some of these things. I don't know. I'm just throwing this out there instead of putting a specific line in somewhere else.
So if you were, if you were looking at April for retirement, would you stick around until July to help whoever comes into the position?
Prefer not to.
We have already funded until July 1st.
I got a few, well, again, like I said at the very beginning, it's open.
Hasn't eaten.
Yeah, I'm not going to let the town, I'm not going to lead with the town in a real problem.
What's a reasonable overlap? What's a reasonable overlap for a building commissioner?
I have been, that, I don't know. It really depends on how experienced the person is. I mean, if we get a very experienced person that has done commercial, I mean, it's, it'd be maybe a few weeks just to go through everything and try to transition what I have into what they want to do. But if it's somebody else, that, I mean, it could be a little bit longer.
So, Tim, why don't you and I get together between now and next Wednesday? And let's look at some budget options. And we can, we can develop something for the warrant for the October 2020.
And also, Mr. Chris, just take a look at what we have, too. Where we might be able to pull anything from.
Yeah, because if it's only a couple of weeks, then that should cover it.
Right, and that's not, you know, if it's two or three months, it's a little bit bigger dollars.
I think, too, with the hiring process, we'll reveal what we, we need, you know? Once we get an idea of the, we might find a candidate that's maybe a little inexperienced, but more committed than somebody that's got a lot of experience. So it's kind of worth that extra time investment. So who knows? It's hard to say when we don't know what the candidate looks like, you know?
And I just hope that when we start interviewing, that we're not just going to pick something, somebody to fill the position. Because I, I, it's almost Dave forever.
Yes, we've made mistakes in the past. I was part of some of them.
Did you get that on tape?
Oh, yeah.
I don't hear anybody else committing to it.
I know I've said this recently to other people, but I think that the board that's in front of you now is very much committed to a continuous improvement theme. Meaning, we don't want to go backwards. So, yep.
Okay. Well, anything else, anybody, anything else? Any motions we want to make out of this? Anything? I can't think of anything off the top of my head, but
I'll just take it as an instruction to work with Tim and present you with some funding options.
Yeah, I think funding options and then if you could give us some
Position options.
Position options, maybe what we should be looking at doing, you know? So that'd be great. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Tim, for coming tonight.
Is he here for Russell School, too?
Uh, yeah, do we, oh, what do
Although, did you need to do something? It says Senior Services Director position.
Yep.
You need us to act on that before we leave the site?
Okay. So, sorry.
So, I think it's the recommendation of the Council on Aging that we take the two positions that are there right now and increase their hours for both of them and then increase the pay for one of them in order to provide as much coverage and continuity of senior services, services. Until a replacement for Suzanne can be hired. So the recommendation is to increase Violet Supas' hours from 35, which she currently has, to 40. And give her an increase in pay. She receives about $22 an hour, increase it up to 27. And then with Lauren Hattigan, change her hours currently from 15 to 25. Keep her pay at the current level. So we ran some, a little hard to tell because we don't know how long we're going to be without a Senior Services Director. But we ran a couple of numbers and it seemed like we could do it within the budget that we have.
Well, you have the money, you're not paying Suzanne's.
Exactly.
Yeah, because there's no impact to the budget. I mean, I
And Jane, is that basically the, correct to your understanding as well? Was there any other hour increases?
No, that's correct. But it might be that Violet's are only 37 and a half. That's, I'm not sure where Suzanne and Violet are on that conversation.
Could, could we say up to 40 now for the motion? Okay.
Can we just check with the Treasurer's Office to make sure that there's no big changes to benefits or anything as far as the cost for those hour increases?
I'll check out the benefits.
Well, 35 hours, she's already getting
Yeah, she's already getting them.
What's the other one at?
And Lauren is on her husband's and does not use benefits. But you should confirm that, but that is
How many hours does she have right now?
15 to 25.
15. You'd be increasing her to 25, which would make the position eligible. But this is a temporary increase.
Well, what's the, 20 is the break off, isn't it?
Yeah, but I think you need to do a certain amount over the course of an entire year before that really triggers. And this is a temporary increase. Hard to say because we don't have, we don't know when we're going to get a director. But I'm thinking that you're not going to see any changes in the position would be eligible for benefits, but as you said, she's not in a position where she's going to be taking it. And I don't think that, because it's a temporary change to the position, I don't think you're triggering something that is obligating you in the future.
So I'll make a motion to increase the number of hours in the salaries as recommended as long as it could be covered in the current budget.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There is, I believe, a warrant article to raise Lauren's hours to 25 in the whole town meeting.
But that's separate and apart.
That's separate.
Yeah.
But I mean, if it's, so it might just roll into that. And the reason for that is she's our outreach coordinator. And right now, she's there Monday, Wednesday and Fridays from 9 until 2. So she places a call to somebody on Monday and they get back to her on Tuesday. She's not there. Now, we're talking about somebody at risk, they're looking for help. So she gets back on Wednesday and they play phone tag. So putting her at 25 hours a week gives her a steady time there, steady time for people to come in. And we are seeing more and more people at risk needing help now that we have somebody who's really out there doing the job.
So we're really talking about maybe a month or so of this temporary increase until maybe a town meeting warrant passes where it's permanent.
Or two months and then
Well, the deadline for applications is the 13th and then by the time they review them, offer somebody a job and then they notice.
Yeah. And our percentage of seniors in our community is the highest in the Pioneer Valley, let's say. So we do have a, yeah, you know, a good percentage of seniors in our community. So I think this is something that we should look, look to, you know, serving that population. All right. Anything else there? Good? Let's look at Russell School Building Committee. Select Board will form a committee to review the options for the Russell School. This is something discussed the last meeting. Did we have any
So there's information that I received from the CPA committee just today or yesterday that apparently there were two articles for the Russell School. One for the plan and the other one for the roofing. The roofing was approved, but the plan was not. Can you amplify on what that may mean?
Well, one of the discussions we had in the past was what are we going to do with Russell School? We came up with a total price tag, which, which is exorbitant. So what we wanted to do was hire Mr. Tuttle, who's on as an architectural professional, to review just being able to stabilize the exterior of the building. That was, we had gone forward for $10,000 or $8,000. They say they, we have to fund 20, 20%. So we were asking $8,000 from CPA so we could come up with some scenarios of what to do with the building. The scenarios would be from complete renovation of the building to maybe a partnership or something else and always demolition. We don't have prices. We don't have any idea what these things would cost to be able to present to the people, the residents. So what we wanted was the $8,000 from them to, to, to have Larry help us come up with some scenarios. What can we do with the building? What kind of grants we can get? But we need some professional help from other people. And we're hoping that we could set up a subcommittee. And we talked about that, doing a subcommittee of how to get some funding.
So CPA denied that request?
I did.
Huh, okay.
Can we add a warrant article for that? We could take the place of that CPA article we just pulled and
We've got, we've got a number of them.
Well, I'm just saying, so if we can allocate the money, then we can go forward with the subcommittee, knowing that we can act on that. Because if we form a committee and we don't have any money to explore anything, it's kind of what's the point of having a committee?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of, after reading up on CPA with this whole issue, I'm kind of surprised that that got denied because that is within the definition of
It is within the definition.
Yeah.
We, we were surprised that it was denied, but they're very careful.
Yeah.
Give them credit. And they have some reservations because if we don't, as a town or the, or a committee, have a, have a plan to present, but we don't know what's, we don't know all the facts. We don't have all the numbers. We don't know what's possible.
Yeah.
So the CPA was concerned, well, okay, if we come up with all these scenarios and everybody votes demolish the building, are we going to be in trouble for spending $8,000 on something that we just go ahead and demolish?
But I think it's about preserving the building we're looking at. One of the options is preserving.
You should look at it the other way.
Yeah.
And say, we need to do this to figure out how to preserve the building.
Yeah.
So we came up with a ad or a plea for, or a description of this committee, this subcommittee. But I wanted to just read and just, we can discuss it and decide that we could go ahead and have a subcommittee. We would post it on the town, you know, channel, public television and on our Facebook page. So Dave Tudor and I wrote this up. It says, Municipal Building Committee seeks residents to serve on the Russell School Subcommittee. The Subcommittee is charged with research and discussion to prioritize options for the future use of the Russell School building. The Subcommittee will hold monthly meetings with additional meetings scheduled as needed. Interested residents should submit a short letter of interest to the Select Board or Municipal Building Committee. So
Sounds fine to me.
Yeah. Sounds great.
Can we vote to approve that but not actually form the committee at this point? Because if we're going to kind of, if we don't have the money to explore the options, then it kind of, why even?
Well, yeah, let's, why don't we do something on the town meeting warrant to give some, if CPA isn't going to do it right now, maybe if we have a better plan, they'd be willing to do it in the future. Or we could reapply again with CPA, too.
One of the critical things we have, we discussed in our meeting last night is that we need, we want people on this committee to come from people with financial expertise or redevelopment expertise or public, private partnerships, not-for-profits. How can, how can you adapt or reuse a historic structure? And we would have focus and short focus meetings, focus groups. And it would allow us to just, to really work contacting Massachusetts Historical Commission because there are some matching funds that we qualify for because the Russell School is on the National Register of Historic Places and it's a contributing building to the district, which is just an honor, as you probably know. It doesn't give you any regulatory, but it is, there needs a lot of criteria for some matching funds we were qualified for, but we just don't know yet what they are. And that's why we wanted to have the Subcommittee to get local experts.
And at some point CPA, and when I had a couple of discussions with a couple of attorneys, along with the historical grant money matching, if it's at all possible, some historic, being historic, the CPA could possibly get behind funding. And if we were looking into rebuilding that, like the old Hadley plan, laws
And if we were looking into rebuilding that, like the old Hadley Plan law is originally, and turning it into the town law would be a great asset to the center of town. It's a two million dollar corner. You know, these buildings are not fifty thousand dollar corners here on the corner of Middle Street and Ninety, I hate to tell you. You know?
That's a two million dollar corner.
Yeah. Yeah, each one of these four corners is a couple million dollar corner.
It also gives the town to be more fully integrated with the Hadley Historical Commission, because they are our local point people for the Massachusetts Historical Commission. So I would think the Subcommittee, we would like to invite someone from the Historical Commission to serve on the Subcommittee if you're okay with us having a Subcommittee.
Yeah. I mean, I think form it and have the warrant article and, I mean.
Yeah, I think a warrant would be good.
To get, well, to give them some funding, to have some engineering and architectural support, and then form the committee.
I mean, a lot of it was done, but that's already, what, eight, ten years ago?
Yeah, and Larry Tuttle updated those numbers. But what we need is expertise to give us an idea of what directions we can do, partnerships, how do we do this stuff?
So we're talking, ten thousand dollars is what ideally is what it would cost, you think?
Ten?
I'm sorry?
Ten thousand?
You know, a lot of these.
Yeah, we, yeah, it was ten thousand dollars that we felt for Larry's, and he'd be part of the committee dealing with.
A lot of these bigger cities that apply for these grants have a lot bigger grant funding than fifty-fifty also. Some of these bigger cities that have rebuilt their old libraries, their old town halls, their old schools, you know, I see it all the time on the news.
We've got six guys down there full time just dealing with.
Just grant writers, yeah. Yep. And what, actually, it was just on the news, it was eighteen something, their old schools that they just renovated.
So I'll make a motion to add to the special town meeting warrant, ten thousand dollars for the on-call architect, is that what it is?
Second.
For the Russell School.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, send the warrant.
And then would we have your approval to form a Subcommittee for Town Meeting?
Yeah.
Because we would like to post this and say, have them submit a short paragraph of interest to, would it be to, to our committee or to you?
Probably to us.
To us, I think.
It would go to us, but maybe we could see, you know, forward them to you guys for review type of thing?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Once we get it, we can have a meeting like this and go over them.
Make another motion to approve the Russell School Building Subcommittee using the announcement or the language that you.
Yeah, I'll hopefully mail it to Christian? Who do I mail it to?
For, to post on Hadley Media? Just Drew?
David?
No, Jennifer.
Jennifer.
I'm signing for me, Drew for Hadley Media.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second.
Yes, I'll report it to them.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, yeah. That sounds, that's exciting.
Did we finish the dates for?
To North Hadley Hall?
Yeah, maybe we should do that. Yeah, we did. Okay, before you guys leave, we have our North Hadley Village Hall Review of Proposals. I don't know if you have seen these, but we review the proposals for the sale of North Hadley Village Hall, which will due August twenty-seventh. We have two bids. One, the price offered seventy thousand, and one for fifty thousand or a dollar for a ninety-nine-year lease for the ball field, it says. So we can't lease the ball field, because that's under Article ninety-seven, just the building.
So.
I haven't had a chance to review these, because we just got them, so.
Yeah, so we, Mr. Hieronymus is here in the audience.
Okay.
He is the apparent high bidder. We did go out to bid according to law, and we did receive two proposals. You have the results here. The bid was for the building. The bid responses, both of them, are for building and the land. So we're going to have to work through that issue. My purpose of bringing this forward to you tonight is to find out if the apparent high bidder is the price that you were hoping for. If, is it acceptable? If it is, then we can do the fine-grained detail that we need to do in order to complete the deal. If it's not, then we need to think about doing something differently.
I'll just say, from a person's perspective, I think that I would not feel comfortable giving, or selling lakefront land for that small of a price. I think it would serve the town much better as open space than, and incur the cost of demolition, rather than giving that land away for such a small amount of cost.
Yeah, I just feel like, well, it is a historical building that requires a lot of work to get it up to snuff. So, yeah, it's cheap for the land, but if you have to keep, I don't know what the, I haven't had time to review the proposal and understand what the intent is. But, I mean, if it is something that is within the town's purview and preserving that historical building, there is something to that.
So if I could.
Sure, yeah.
The playing field would be maintained as green space?
The playing field, we can't sell. It's under Article ninety-seven.
So it just cannot?
It's town land, yeah.
Can't be leased or sold, has to stay.
That's town property, so it's just the building. Yeah.
What, I believe whatever's tarred is part of the property line. We still, do we have actual survey markings there or not? Do they ever have a pen?
I think someone did survey it.
Yeah, Mr. Eisert did the survey.
Well, wherever they are, which you probably didn't see. Right. It's been a couple of years now, I think, since he's done it.
No, I think he just did it for the.
Yeah, it was done recently.
All the lives. Because when we were there, I don't remember seeing it. But anyway, you know, the property value, the property value of just the building is two hundred and forty-something thousand, I believe.
The assessed value.
Assess value. You know, so as the last time, we've had under a hundred thousand dollar bids, you know? And I was really looking for, I think, a hundred thousand dollars was a reasonable amount of money for that built. And I understand it's a small piece of property. That would seem fair. But on the other hand, I hate to see it knocked down, you know? It still has that historical value to a lot of people up in that area, so.
Tim?
The real problem that we're faced is now with that line on the north side being so close to the building, there's hardly any land to even park on. And we've basically boxed ourselves in a corner on this. And I think that really needs a review on, we put this out, but how can anybody actually use it properly?
Yeah, but town meeting took that away. Town meeting took that away this last meeting.
Town meeting took that away last meeting.
So that's, I think that a lot of people didn't realize what they were actually voting on. Basically, yeah, they talked about ball field and open space, but there's problems keeping that as open space on the maintenance of it. But then nobody really discussed, okay, if you do that, here's where the actual line is. We didn't know where the line was. And you basically condemn the building to its death.
Yeah, and what was the actual vote on town meeting? The wording of it? It wasn't directing us to do that, it was allowing us to make the decision. Right? But that was my recollection of the way it was worded.
To petition the legislature.
Petition, to be removed from Article ninety-seven.
I, you know, it's a shame we're here again, dealing with this building. And I too do not want to see these old buildings demolished if we can save them, if we have somebody that's willing to step up and do the right thing for the building. But I think that we've done ourselves a disservice by not making it conducive to somebody being able to use it.
Somebody had a comment? Okay, go ahead.
I just kind of want to reiterate what Tim said. I don't want to speak on behalf of Mr. Hieronymus and the bank account, but I mean, for me to do that project was over one point two million. But the building's worthless without parking. There's no bank in the world that's going to give any money to a building with no parking. It's worthless. I think the land is sellable, by the way. My attorney says it is.
As far as the ball field, you mean?
Pardon?
As far as the ball field goes?
Ball field, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's, town meeting rejected that by a wide margin, so.
Based on, I think, a lot of proper information.
Yeah, maybe so, yeah.
I'd just like to take it on our advisement until next week, and then we can make a decision on it.
Yeah, the other thing is, we don't have, unless I missed it, do we have the actual proposals, or we just have the dollar figures?
Yeah, so we made copies of the proposals inception, and then gave them, I think it's in your mailbox.
Oh, it's in the mailbox.
That's right here. I don't know, I just got it.
Oh.
As we walked in. Your notepad. Your notepad there.
The line that I was asked to do with the, the one with the higher price.
This is Mr. Hieronymus. Okay. Yeah, I mean, this is helpful to know what the intended use is, yeah.
Which is what? What is the intended use?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Is it okay? Jane just said what the intended use is in the proposal. This is public record now, correct?
Yes.
Yep. So to convert the first floor space to an open space music hall. Goal would be to have weekly summer season concerts and events. Basically, you know, the village hall idea. And the fire station addition side would remain just a personal workshop of some kind. And then on the second floor would be three apartments. I agree with John, I mean, I think maybe we should have time to.
Yeah.
I'd just like to, I'd just like to, until next week, because I am really inclined to vote for the highest bid at this point in time, rather than seeing it knocked down and cost us probably more than that, to remove it and turn it into green space.
Yeah.
I just have a question about the surveying of the lot lines. So when town meeting said, want to preserve the ball field under open space, at what point was there a border? Was the border known, the lot line known of that parcel? Was it a known?
No.
No.
So would the town have the authority to?
Reassess it?
Reassess the lot line to give on the north side of the building some, you know, parking area, but still preserve majority of the ball field for open space? Or is that not allowable?
Or would we still have to go?
We'd have to, yeah, we'd have to do the same, two articles for the Article ninety-seven issues.
Yeah, and we'd have to get that right, because if we got the square footage wrong, and then we were a hundred square feet on the planning board, you know, that would be a shame. So we'd want that right on. Okay, well, let's, you know, thank you for your proposal. We really do appreciate it and wish it was easier, but it's been an issue for a while.
You don't mind putting a lot of our week in for us?
Yeah.
Having to mull it around?
Yeah. But we'll delay it, I guess, till next week. And we'll have Joyce back, so we'll get her comments on this as well.
Oh, boy.
You sure you want to make?
Yeah, do you want to make a decision? Does that change your decision now? Okay. Okay. Moving on.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you very much, Tim, thank you for sticking around. Thank you both for coming. Kestrel Trust Mount Holyoke Range Project, Appointment of Volunteers for Ad-Hoc Committee. Do we want to make a discussion or just make a motion for the listed members?
Is there any reason to discuss, or?
The only amendment would be Steve Simkowitz, who's the president of the snowmobile club, who we, when we had the initial discussions, we said that we would include.
Oh, none of these guys are?
What's that?
None of these folks are part of the snowmobile?
No, I know, that's why I said add him.
No, Steve wants to be involved along with the rest of the hunting and fishing program.
Oh, yeah, no, I remember that. I thought maybe one of these folks was representing that group. So you're saying they're not represented here?
Correct.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve the following individuals. We have Mary Thayer, Linda Castrenovo, Charlotte Murdisaw, John Mitchikowski Jr., and Andrew Gnotick, and Steve Simkowitz.
Yeah.
As members of the ad hoc committee.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mount Holyoke Range Project through Kestrel Trust. Kestrel Trust.
And are you going to be on that committee too, David?
Yes.
Okay.
You better be.
Conversations that I've had with the Conservation Commission and Kestrel already, I think this should be a relatively painless process. It seems like the language is pretty inclusive as far as uses go, so I don't think, at least from my perspective, there's nothing extremely objectionable in there that's going to be a real showstopper. So I think it should be fairly easy.
Okay, yeah, just let me know when we want to, either if you guys want to have the committee come in front of the board, we'll put it on the agenda and whenever you're ready. Yeah. Okay. Was there a motion in a second?
Yes, I think.
I think so.
Motion?
So I have a question that you need to ask your committee. Since we just voted the Hopkins Academy cross-country request for Bay Road Reservoirs, how much paperwork are they going to have to go through, the Boy Scouts, different organizations to use the Bay Road Reservoirs?
Didn't they do it already? They, we did this last year.
No, I know we did.
He's talking in the future, I think, once the restriction's on there, but.
Of the property.
Oh, oh, oh.
Well, that's.
These are the issues I have.
I guess that'll depend on what the final language is on the restriction.
Or we could just maybe write it in, that we, the town manages the use similar to how it is right now, you know? I mean.
Yeah. Typically, you wouldn't give up your powers and duties over your own property.
And I was reminded of a, I guess, a motion that was made, or a commitment we made when we discussed this originally, was that if we passed this at town meeting, that the no trespassing signs would come down at the reservoir, the parking permit requirement would still stay in order to avoid issues with the out-of-town problems. But, so that people understand there will be access to the land and use of the land, rather than just a restriction.
Okay.
No, we did a motion.
There's a motion?
Second.
He's, John seconded? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for doing that. We could do senior center library and fire substation updates.
Sure.
Jane, you're here, do you want to go first, senior center update?
This building, if you noticed?
It's got a roof on it, kind of.
Boy, those framers are moving really fast. Things are moving along quite well. They're working with the library in terms of the river problem you heard with the asbestos removal for the water line. The other piece is the memo of understanding the Select Board made with the Legion.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up. We, you know, as, we all remember back when we were in the planning process of the project, we had an MOU with the Legion to settle some issues with the parking there. And as part of that MOU, we were going to pave their parking lot and paint it. So we didn't have that originally in the scope for the construction, so we've got a change here for doing that work. It's sixty thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and three cents to pave that parking lot in accordance with how the rest of the parking lot is being paved, so that it's all uniform, there's no cracking, there's nothing else. so that it's all uniform, there's no cracking, there's nothing else. We had a budget in that MOU of $75,000 for doing this work. So it's, you know, within the budget and satisfies the MOU.
And to be clear, this is grant money we're using, not town, the town's not paying for the work, right?
It is.
It's offset by the grant.
Offset by the grant, yes.
But it comes out of that bucket.
It's in the same place.
Right.
Yeah.
We're still writing the check, but it's grant.
Yes, yes. So I'll just make a motion for $60,693 cents, or $60,693.03 to pave the Legion parking lot per our MOU with the Legion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Is that?
All the other requests went without a hitch, so.
Yeah. Any other updates there that we're good, right? Library?
And then the library, I had asked David, so there'd been a fair amount of conversation going on with Viva N' Vodka. Paul's, you know, everybody knows Paul owns the church, the old St. John's Church. The town had entered into an agreement in 2014 or 15? Yeah, many moons ago.
15.
2015, entered into an agreement to allow him access to parking spaces behind that building. And so with the construction going on, there hadn't really been a formal provision to deal with that. So I was going to bring it up tonight. However, David told me just before the meeting that it sounds like some sort of an agreement was reached between the OPM and Paul.
OPM and Paul, that there is a place dedicated for his deliveries and he has parking for his employees. And send the particulars by email around in the morning. But it seems like this is accommodated as much as the site can possibly do on the building construction circumstances.
And then the other big item for discussion is the actual demolition of the building. So last week, we had hoped, and they were still working towards an August 26th demolition start, which would have been Monday. But the labor-intensive nature of what they're doing has, I think, caught people a little bit unaware. So right now, the last report that we got, which was this morning, indicates that they're bringing in the demolition equipment on-site Friday. It's possible they can start as early as Friday, but more likely, we're gonna be spilling into next week. So that's the next big.
Won't they run into trouble on the roof?
Yeah, the roof, yeah. Yeah.
Exciting.
I think that's about it, yeah. And, you know, there's no question that it's impacting.
Everything.
Everything, you know, and library operations and all of that, so.
Yeah, they're changing their hours in order to avoid being there during act of demolition.
Right.
Has the library moved their drop box?
We moved it once. The last I left off, it was right at the entrance to the driveway. And then I think that may have been a little bit problematic, so I'm not sure if it has moved again.
Because several seniors have asked if it could be put somewhere where they could get to it.
Right, well, it was moved to the very beginning of the driveway, but then I even noticed just anecdotally driving by and sitting at the light a couple of times that you could see people, could see the drop box, but they weren't sure if they should pull into the, because it's all dirt for the construction and the fencing. And then I saw a couple of people like turn around and leave. So I don't know at this point if.
Can we just, can we just let the library temporarily put it over here on Town Hall?
Probably be my suggestion.
Side steps or something so it's outside where they can get to it.
I think the issue isn't getting the.
By the sidewalk, you know?
Yeah, I don't know. I find it hard to believe that they would have hundreds of pounds of books that then have to be brought back.
Quite a few people have that.
Quite a few people, but yeah, I mean, I would hope that there might be a simple way to get it. Yeah, just with a cart.
I can, I can make the offer to the library commission.
Yeah.
And any word on their sidewalk?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Oh, on the sidewalk itself? Are you talking about the?
The one in front of the Good One Now, Middle Street.
The temporary one?
The temporary one?
Well, no, they fenced off the sidewalk right now, so because of all the water work they were doing.
I think they're just about done with that. They shouldn't be opening that up again for the side entrance, they're talking about.
I'm just talking.
They've lowered the hydrant on it, yeah.
Right, yeah, they're talking about putting in a, it says, it's interesting that temporary parking surface will be installed for a proper wheelchair-accessible parking area for the duration of the project.
Okay.
So that's the only update on that right now.
Nothing about the, from the driveway to 9, nothing about that, so.
I didn't see that, yeah.
And maybe, maybe if they're paving that area, they're gonna do all that paving at one time. They just have it fenced until they can pave it.
Pave it, yeah.
Maybe that's it, okay. Okay, and anything else there? And then the fire substation, I know Joyce isn't here, but I don't know if there are any updates anybody is aware of or, I don't go by there very much, so.
What I see is they are tying in drainage and I believe water lines, but from the, I think it's that V River Drive, and they're doing, working on site work. That's all I can see.
They've got reforms for pouring foundation.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I believe there were some questions on a water line today, but they're, they're moving ahead with it, I guess.
Okay. Human Resources Hiring Ad hoc Committee?
Can we go back to the senior center about the van or should I bring that up later?
So the van, you've got the authorized borrowing of $80,000 for the van. The price of the van was about $75,000.
Correct.
About a little less than $5,000 of surplus borrowing. You're talking about using that, you're talking about using that surplus borrowing in order to create some sort of canopy or enclosure for the van. We checked with the borrowing authority and they're not happy with that choice. So Linda and I are identifying funds elsewhere in the budget that may be able to be used for that purpose.
Talking like a little canvas or portable.
No, no, it wouldn't.
Like a cardboard.
Canvas wouldn't hold up, but the way it rusted so quickly because it was out in the elements, I mean, we have a $75,000 van, $4,000 we should be able to cover it. And the planning board has said we can't put any more structures on that site. So the police chief has said he will work with us to keep it at the safety, I mean, pardon, keep it at the safety limits.
Could you get us a price estimate for it? That'll be very helpful, thank you. And we'll try to work to make this happen. But the borrowing for the vehicle, it's hard to use the surplus for a structure, David.
But it's a vehicle.
Put it on wheels.
All right, thanks, Jane.
Okay, so I should, well, I'm just gonna bring something up. Not, well, just a couple of people, and I suspect this is a take it under advisement kind of thing, but I just wanna make sure everybody knows. I've been approached by a handful of people, you know, so a small number, but still, people who are kind of interested in the overall projects that are, that are going on, who have questioned whether or not the select board has really thought about the fact that the appropriated amount for the senior center was based on a larger-scale building and that we then mandated the reduction to the 10,500 square feet, yet the dollars remain the same. So people have said, well, so what happens with the extra money? And I said, well, we haven't really talked about the financials. So maybe at some point soon, we should have the building committees both come in, the library and the senior center and the substation. And kind of check in and do an update on the, where everybody's at.
We haven't really borrowed the amounts as needed yet, so, I mean, the rest of the allotted money won't even be borrowed anyway.
Well, that's not, yeah.
We have the approved.
We haven't talked about it.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the point I just wanna raise.
I think that's worth, worthwhile discussion.
Yeah.
So, so we've actually been talking about this behind the scenes. It's the borrowing authorization. If you borrow $3 million and you only use 2.5 of the, you have a surplus borrowing authorization of a half million dollars, what do you do with it? Typically, what we do at town meeting time is we clean that up. It's the cleanup article so that we don't clutter our chart of accounts and have to report to SEC for borrowing that we never intend to use. Another possible option would be, once the project is done and we busted this bottle of champagne across the bow and all that kind of stuff, we can repurpose that excess borrowing for another municipal building project. All right, so DPW or something like that. It would require a town meeting vote, but that's an option.
But, yeah, that makes sense. It would have to go back to town meeting. It's not something we can all do.
No, but it's nothing more yet. I mean, in the past, that's the way it's worked. It wasn't, just wasn't borrowed full now.
So I think what you're getting at is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the budget amount or the borrowing authorization and the bids on the library were much tighter than, say, what the senior center had. So if, once we're part, past the major stumbling blocks with the senior center, reallocate that money maybe as a little bit more of a buffer for the library, right, until we can get past that tough point in the library as well. So that way, if we're risking running over just maybe, you know, on water issues or things like that, then we have a little bit of cushion. Is that kind of what you're getting at or is it?
That's certainly the, where folks were coming from, yeah. I mean, there's no question, so.
And we're not trying to steal from you guys. We just wanna make sure that.
Can't we finish it first and then say?
Yeah, yeah, let us get out of the ground. Yes, David?
Yeah, I think where some of this may have come about is if, like, the fire station, the library had fixed budgets. They all worked towards it, but with the senior center, it's unclear what that number was because it was based on a much bigger building at one point, so was authorized. But if they think that they have that amount of money and it wasn't reduced because of the reduced building, then they can certainly keep spending it.
That's not what we're trying to do.
Well, I understand that, but I'm saying that there's, these other projects have been working to this fixed number that it was based on their square footage, what they asked for. So this other number has since changed. Has it changed back to the town or is it still available?
Yeah, town meeting, as David said, town meeting voted to appropriate X million dollars for each of these projects. So we have not seen any financial information, any progress reports at all as a select board. And that's why I'm saying I think now is probably a good time before we get, you know.
Yeah.
We wanna be far enough in so that you're comfortable, as the senior center building committee, that you're not running into any. Major pitfalls.
Yeah.
We already know that the library has run into a couple of those.
And they were real close on the budget.
Yeah, that was much tighter.
They gave up some things because they ran over.
And we're, we're hoping, you know, my explanation has been, let's get out of the ground with the senior center. Make sure we get past, you know, we still have ACM, asbestos-containing material.
Right.
We don't know how big the extents are out there. You know, that's gonna be after the demolition of the Hooker School, get that right. We're gonna excavate the ACM out there. So we'll know more than what's happening with the budget, and we have good track of the budget, so.
At that point, if the library's out of money, then we may have to reassess that alone for the senior center to pay for the asbestos cleanup.
So when are we going to be out of the ground? What's the projections for the?
Well, we would, would have practically been by now, but we ran into that asbestos material when they were putting in the, with the water, storm water sewage line. So I don't know. It depends when we get that done and get to the rest of this. Stormwater overflow, I'm sorry, yeah, not sewage, yeah, sorry. It's getting late.
It's, as everyone has already said many times, it's a tight site.
Yeah.
Right.
And we're working with the library and their object right now is to get the Hooker School down, which means we can't work in that area while they're in the process. So we can't go forward for three more weeks, probably.
Yeah.
In terms of that part.
But they've got a lot of internal work now that the structure's up.
Oh, they're going.
Oh, oh, yeah.
They're going fast.
It's the site work that's the problem right now.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
Right, and the site work is the problem because the asphalt plants close November 26th. And they wanna be paved.
Yeah.
Right.
So then.
So that's, that's the real stumbling block.
And the plan was to be done with all this storm, stormwater overflow, piping before the Hooker School was touched, but we ran into the ACM and that's caused a huge delay.
First discovered it in May.
Yeah.
It's been a long time getting the permits and then the second permits.
And then finding a place to put it and it's, yeah, it's a whole process.
So how about?
So what is the plan? Are they going to contain it?
Yeah, that would work.
Library building committee is gonna be meeting prior to that, I'm pretty sure, too. Yeah, we meet on September 9th.
Place we're taking it in New York then required that we have soil samples before they accepted it, so we had that done.
Yeah, we'll have two more meetings prior to that date.
Did I just figure that? It gives the three weeks to get rid of the ACM and then a buffer and then we can get everybody in the same room and say, do we wanna look at moving funds?
Right. Well, and the other thing, again, not that, you know, not that anybody out there would be thinking anything along these lines, but maybe it just bears saying out loud, the senior center design is what it is and you're building towards the original design. There have not been modifications or add-ons or extras put in here.
No marble floors.
No marble floors.
The only, the only thing we did was put in the gold-plated roof. Now, we put on a metal roof instead of the asphalt. That was the only change.
Yeah, so I just wanna make sure that's said out loud because I think, you know.
So next time you meet, you're gonna be meeting with David Isenthal and Linda Sanderson to talk about the borrow, the bands, the bond anticipatory notes for the capital project. We can revisit this at that time and David Isenthal can guide us through what's possible, what's not possible.
That's good.
That's good. My arm's still sore from the last time we met with him.
We won't make you do that again for a while.
Forgot about that.
Okay. We good with that?
No.
Okay. So the Human Resources Ad hoc Committee. Members, we have, okay, so we have members for the committee. Will be David Phil, Joyce Chunglo, Linda Sanderson, Joan Zuzco, and Mike Mason. The deadlines for the applications is September 6th. That's what we have in here right now. I don't know if there is, did we not create this committee before?
We voted to establish it, but we didn't appoint anybody to be on it.
Okay.
I make a motion that we appoint the individuals so named.
I'll second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you again. And last thing here, town administrator report.
All right, keep it brief.
No, there were some.
First of all, what I did on summer vacation. Classification compensation plan study is, that project is substantially complete. We received the final report yesterday and I'm gonna be reviewing it and we'll take whatever final steps on that. The IT grant, we ordered the equipment that's been delivered and we're developing a training day. Jennifer's been taking the lead on making that. Do you have a date for that?
I'm waiting to hear back from Northampton, but they've been in touch with Northeast IT today and I've been working with both of them today. They're doing all the software setup and then we'll have a date for the training.
Woody Bridge, we had applied for a culprit replacement grant and we unfortunately did not receive it. I just got the rejection letter the other day. The program had $750,000 available for all cities and towns and 61 communities applied requesting over $6 million. They funded only 14 communities and an average of $53,000 each. Hadley does not want them, so. We just talked about all the library, senior center, and fire substation, North Hadley Village Hall. So the adult-use marijuana, we're working with a, negotiating a host community agreement. So the adult-use marijuana, we're working with a, negotiating a host community agreement. I had a chance to look at the counterproposal, I've got some questions about that, but I think we're very close to coming to a final conclusion on that. All right, Personnel Handbook, in anticipation of hiring a Human Resources Director, the Employee Handbook has been updated to reflect changes in practice and law. And that project is now substantially complete, and thanks to David Orteno, as well as Linda Ledoux for all of their work on making that happen. Capital Asset Study, that is now underway, with site inspections occurring now, that'll be a benefit to us in terms of auditing, insurance, and capital planning. Mass Works Grant Application, we applied for two hundred thousand dollars to re-clear roadways in the vicinity of the West Street Common. About forty-four thousand square yards of road surface would be treated there. So we'll find out if we get that. We renegotiated our, for the municipality, this is different from the residential, we renegotiated the electricity aggregation, got a very favorable price. Formerly, we were working with Hampshire Council of Governments through their Hampshire Power Program. We've been getting a commercial rate of basically ten and a half cents per kilowatt hour, now that we've clinched nine point one cents per kilowatt hour through Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, and they have an energy branch. So that'll be a benefit to the town. We were projecting a ten percent increase in energy prices, now we're looking at a ten percent decrease in energy prices. And we got our OPEV actuarial update, and Linda and I met with Parker Elmore to talk about it. There's a lot of good news about that, I gave you some benefits, but I gave you some summary of the benefits, but we're in really good shape with respect to our OPEV. Having met with Parker Elmore and looking at the most recent actuarial report, we thought we might revisit our funding strategy, and based upon everything that we have in front of us, I think that our recommendation from Linda and me is that we stay our present funding course, which means to increase our OPEV funding by two and a half percent for, per year, and continue with four or five annual payments into the OPEV trust, using dollar-cost averaging, and to review our investment strategy on an annual basement with our investment advisor. So basically, stay the course.
So the Hampshire Council of Governments is in the news again. Right, so they never made that larger payment, but they made the payment for, to extend employee benefits one month. And it looks like the legislature filed by Joe Commerford's Chief of Staff, or Joe Commerford, but with the Chief of Staff, Jared, kind of made it past the first hurdle at the state, but still not definitive that they'll step in to cover that liability.
Oh, it's, yeah.
And Dan Carey involved a little bit with it, or?
Yeah, I think the legislative delegation was behind it, pushing it for sure, supporting, but it was Joe's Chief of Staff, Jared, I can't remember his last name, but he was the one who kind of spearheaded it.
Yeah, I read a few emails he was sending back, so.
All right, we talked about the Senior Services Director. We're going out to Viv again for, we're advertising that position again, the deadline is September thirteenth. Human Resources Director, the application deadline is September sixth, there's been a lot of interest in that position. And the department heads are supposed to give our SWAT upgrades today, so I've been collecting those, and I'll assemble them and send them out to you.
Okay.
And that's about it. Then I went to California.
There you go. I've just got one thing, real quick.
Announcement, or?
No, just business.
Oh, okay, go for it.
Zaterka Park.
Yep.
So I know, I've gotten a ton of calls in the last two weeks about it, I know some other members have. We don't have a long-term plan for it at this point, but we do have a contractor coming in this week, or Friday, to take care of the overgrown jungle that is Zaterka Park at this moment. I was asked why it's in its present condition, and I can say that there was a breakdown somewhere along the line between maybe Zaterka Park, the committee, the DPW.
What, DPW Director?
Wherever. I don't think the DPW wasn't even aware that the park was complete was part of the problem. So it was basically left with nobody in control of it. So it's going to be brought back up to where it should be, here at the end of the week, and then probably next week, I'm sure we can figure out a long-term solution, whether it's a contractor or the DPW going forward, but at least it'll get rid of the eyesore that it is now.
I thought we had brought it up at one meeting, that we were, the DPW was going to take it over when the contractor was done with the construction over there. And the contractor had mowed it two or three times, I believe, and must have been the end of the contract, and nobody was notified.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think we brought it up to maintain it, the DPW was going to maintain it.
Was that before the change in DPW Directors?
It was, but it was brought up for discussion, and the question was posed, if I remember.
I haven't found it, I've been kind of looking back.
Yeah, because I think the question was posed, and Marlowe said, yeah, I mean, if we need to take over the park portion, we can, I just need to know.
Yes.
So I don't think that we ever definitively made the handoff, and then, like, David's saying, the other side of it is, they just kind of finished, walked away, and nobody talked to anybody, so.
Well, that was, that was it. I mean, they were doing a great job, the contractor was doing a great job maintaining it to the end of his contract, and.
Right, but, you know, the park commissioners never communicated, so.
So the issue is that we don't have the equipment, according to the DPW Director, to mow the steep hill, so, or at least in his opinion, we don't, so we're looking at either an outside contractor or having to acquire a piece of equipment to maintain that hill.
Or rent it.
Yes.
Right.
Back to the old DPW Director, I thought that's why you bought the zero-turn lawnmower, to maintain some of these small pieces of property, and that particular piece of property, when it became, but I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah, Chris could evaluate, I mean, you could talk to Chris about that, to evaluate that, I forgot we had the zero-turn.
Yeah, that's why we bought that machine.
Yeah, okay. Well, that'd be good.
For that deal?
Anything else? Okay.
Zero-turn, zero tumble.
No, it's a real, no, it's a real stupid machine.
All right, you get the mower done.
I'm just going to stay real.
I've got one of the machines.
Get a drone over there watching, John.
No, it works.
Okay, any other announcements? Anybody have any announcements, other than the open house, so to speak, for the Council on Aging Director tomorrow, one-thirty to three-thirty? I don't have anything else off the top of my head.
I know the Young Men's Club's got a couple of events.
Public records, executive session minutes for about the fifth time. Can we really work on those and get them out?
It's like, public records in the Young Men's Club?
No, separate issue.
Separate issue, okay.
All right.
Okay, okay, and then the Young Men's Club has a steak roast on the thirteenth, and I believe the Fireman's Barbecue is the twentieth?
I don't know, I don't have it on.
Pretty sure. I know there's a sign up in front of the public safety complex, so if you drive by.
It's the twentieth.
Twentieth, okay, you can get tickets to that.
And Hadley Public School started today, UMass move-in started today, and goes through the weekend, UMass starts on Tuesday, so expect a lot of traffic in Hadley coming up. Summer's over.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Okay, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, have a good night.